If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Linda Schele.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so, good evening, everybody. Why wouldn't we have special recognitions or tributes? We have an awesome city. And with that, I'm going to jump right in. Councilman Donavich, do you want to start it off? We only have 16 of them, it's fine, just make your seat up.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor tonight to, for the City Council, to present this award, certification, certificates, everything, and then some, to Julius's Barber Shop on their 80th anniversary. They're on Five Mile and Middle Welt Era, they've been in business for a long time now. So on behalf of the City Livonia and the Livonia City Council, we are proud to recognize and celebrate your 80 years of service and presence in our community. We extend our heartfelt congratulations on this remarkable milestone and wish you many more years of continued success, service, and friendship in Livonia. And specifically, Councilwoman Laura Toye said she'll see you in 80 years from now. So we wish you many, many more years of success on behalf of the Council President and all the City Council. Congratulations.
Do you want to give any words of, you know, let's talk about the business a little bit? You know, 80 years is a big milestone, right?
Yes, sir.
We got millions of people watching out there, just tell them who you are.
I'm Margaret Alvarado, and this is my dad Raymond Alvarado. My dad is actually the owner now. So to our knowledge, the barber shop opened September 7th, which would have been, you know, on Sunday. September 7th, 1945, and it was run by three brothers, Alex, Julius, and Irving. And the picture that we have on the website, there's a young man in front of the building, and that was Irving, he was the youngest of the three brothers. And they ran the business until they sold it to a gentleman named Dan. And I can't remember Dan's last name, starts with an F.
Farugia?
Anyway.
Farugia.
Anyway, so Dan, he bought the shop off of them, and then Dan wanted to retire, so he sold the shop to my dad and my older brother Alex, who was known as Barber Al, and he always wore a cowboy hat. So they owned the shop. They took over back in 2002. And then my brother Alex passed away in 2020 at 54 years old. So now my dad is the one who's the owner. And so we're just very grateful for all of our past customers and our new customers as well. And we're very grateful to our staff. And we know that it's quite the blessing to be able to have continued having this business through COVID and through all the other trials that had come in our direction. We have been able to overcome by the grace of God. So we're very blessed and we're very grateful. And our staff is wonderful, and my dad is great. And we're going to have a celebration for our customers. And we're just really excited to celebrate 80 years of serving the community of Livonia and Redford and all the surrounding areas. So thank you very much.
Now, are you doing it this Sunday?
No, it'll be on September 20th.
All right, keep us posted, because we'll see if the city can post some things out. I remember you had something a few years back, we attended, it was always fun. You have stuff that's always good with the community, and we appreciate you calling Livonia home.
Yes, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Beautiful city.
Yes, anybody?
Council President, I'll just note that you both have great hair, so it makes sense that... As the councilwoman with the nicest hair up here, it's my privilege.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
You want, well, let's get a picture, right? Come on. All right, let's take a swam. All right. Well, on to number two of 20. We have, Councilwoman Toye, do you want to kick this one off?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Let me catch my breath. Anyhow, we give out these tributes, we did these a while back. Nice city seal on it, if you ever want to open a business, you'll get a city seal. And this is, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." And that's by Gandhi. This is Cobbler's Corner of Livonia, I don't know how many of you are familiar with them. They're wonderful people. And it's getting to be a lost art, they told me. And we wanted to recognize them for all the years of service they've had. They're just wonderful people, if you ever break a heel on your belt buckle or whatever, they're right there to help you. So don't forget them, they're on Seven Mile, across from the New Meyer almost, the walls are up anyhow. And they're down by Primo's Pizzeria. So please, are they here?
I don't know, do we have any? Yes, come on up!
Oh, come on up!
Yes, you gotta give a 20-minute speech, come on. You want to know everything.
God, I didn't know they were here, that's a relief.
I mean, come on, you know?
Come on, come on down! Which door did you want to pick? Anyhow.
That's great, no. Listen, we're not going to put you on the spot, we just want to recognize you guys for being awesome. If you want to say some things, great, but other than that, we appreciate everything you guys have done. And if you want the mic, you can have it, if not?
Well, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure being in Livonia all these years. Our customers have made our business. And we're very blessed and thankful for all these years. And we're hoping for more. We're not done yet, so I appreciate it, thanks.
All right, hey.
And have them come up, wait.
Pop up, we're not going to go around, but we're going to get a picture right here. We'll save you, but honestly.
Good job, good job, good job. Good job!
All right, I was joking about the 20, there's actually 30, so now, we're going to jump into it. There's Councilman Donavich. All right, so welcome to the 2024 regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, scheduled to be held on Monday, September 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Schele.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
We're here.
We're doing, right now. Roll call now.
You can say aye, if you want.
I'm sorry, here.
You led me astray.
Vice President Tashnik.
I'm here.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Here.
President McCullough.
I'm here too. So we have all seven members present tonight. And then Councilwoman Schele, I'm going to you after the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on City Council on August 25th, 2025. Council?
So moved. Support.
Good. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Schele.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the minutes carry. Councilwoman Schele, the floor is yours.
Thank you. At the last meeting, I gave a report out from the Law and Education Committee, and one of the items was regarding the subject matter of potential ordinance amendment related to cloth coverings on fences. And it was determined that we were going to have this removed from committee, but we failed to make a motion to do so. So I'd like to make a motion to remove this item from committee.
Support.
Any other conversations from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Schele.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Thank you, Councilwoman Schele. All right, so we're going to jump right into audience communication. Council has set aside 30 minutes for items that are not presently on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, make your way to either podium, name and address, you got three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Bigga, I'm a Livonia resident. I'd like to read you something under the Citizen Rights under the Livonia Open Meetings Act and First Amendment. The Livonia, or the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Michigan MCL 15.263, paragraph, par. 5 guarantees that citizens must be given the opportunity to address their city council or other public bodies at meetings. The law does not require individuals to state their name or addresses before speaking. While an individual may, while the council may ask for identifying information, it cannot lawfully make that a condition for participation. The First Amendment also protects expressive conduct by citizens attending meetings. Applause, hand gestures, or other forms of nonverbal expression are considered free speech. Courts have consistently ruled that audience reactions cannot be prohibited simply because council members disagree with viewpoints being expressed. A public body may adopt reasonable, content-neutral rules of decorum to keep order. However, these rules must be narrowly tailored to prevent only actual disruptions of the meeting. Expression such as applause is constitutionally protected unless it truly interferes with the ability to conduct, the council to conduct business. In summary, one, citizens have the right to speak at public meetings without being compelled to give their name and address. Two, audience applause or other expressions are protected under free, under speech under the First Amendment. Councils may regulate disruptive behavior, but not silent speech or expression simply because it is critical or unpopular. Your right to express yourself at public meetings is protected by both Michigan law and United States Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that was pretty disruptive, Mr. President.
So, this is, we've got council communication, I'll make a statement at that point. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody, and good evening to everybody watching at home. My name's Patrick Brockway, Melrose Street, Livonia. As a candidate running for City Council, I do believe that resident input is essential, but I also want you to know that I'm working on ideas to make Livonia a little bit better for you. One of those ideas that I have been kicking around is, I'm calling it the Livonia Community Works Partnership Plan. This plan builds stronger connections between the city, nonprofits, and local businesses, and the schools. Together, we can tackle projects that improve daily life all while utilizing and expanding systems that are already in place within Livonia. Some of these efforts could be temporary, some of these could be long-term, depending on the need. It's not replacing the DPW, but it's to help supplement some of the work that they do, some of the hard work that they do. Smaller projects, like maintaining spaces around our library, which we already have people that go in there and volunteer their time to, you know, trim up some shrubs or whatnot. These are small things that can be handled by volunteers, but the city could legitimize and back these actions, leaving larger, more complex jobs to the Department of Public Works. This keeps the city focused on its core responsibilities while expanding on what gets done. The goal is simple: more results through collaboration, stronger community pride, and neighbors working side by side with the city. If elected, I look forward to making this plan a reality with input from the residents and everybody involved. For more information, you can check out brockwayforlivonia.com, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Cindy Fleming from Livonia. Mr. President and councilmembers, I think that all of you know me, but there are only a few of you that know my husband Todd. Like myself, Todd is a civic-minded person who volunteers in our great community and often helps out friends and even friends of friends by sharing of his time and many talents. It's through one of these connections that Todd and I were introduced to Tim and his wife Joan, who live in Old Rosedale. Not long ago, Todd received a text from Tim that ended up refocusing my resolve to advocate for the renovation and repurposing of the former Alfred Noble Library Building for the benefit and use by all Livonians. I know many of you have grown weary of the many voices who have continued to advocate for this notable mid-century modern building, but I'd like to share that text message with you tonight so that you might consider once again what a gem we have sitting down on Plymouth Road. Hi, Todd. My friend is traveling in the Baltics and sent this text. Joan and Tim, your Livonia library was designed by Gunnar Berghartz, designer of the National Library of Latvia in Riga. We just bumped into an exhibition of his libraries. He worked with Yamazaki in Michigan and many others. He did the Underground Law Library Edition at U of M. He was born in Latvia. Picture to follow. This is a picture, I will give you a copy, of an actual lovely library exhibition, which includes our Livonia Alfred Noble Library. The Alfred Noble Library is in an exhibition over in Europe, being celebrated and connected back to our humble city of Livonia, which has chosen to allow it to crumble and decay. Noble is currently in three separate council committees, and a new task force is being put together through the mayor to activate the outdoor space while exploring possible public-private partnerships to save it. I implore each of you to please take the time to research the building's architecture and architect, and its importance to Livonia's culture and community. Martin Schwartz, professor at Lawrence Tech, is one source. Our Save Alfred Noble Library Facebook page is another. Take time to reflect back on the hundreds of citizens, if not thousands of citizens, who have come before you to advocate on behalf of Noble. Then quickly come together.
Thank you.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. I would like to congratulate Cobbler's Corner. I bought these shoes there. Not only do they repair shoes, they also sell beautiful purses, um, let's see, I think belts, wallets, hatwear, yeah, all kinds of fun stuff. So it's just more than a shoe repair. But anyway, the real reason why I'm here to talk tonight is to thank President McCullough, Vice President Tashnik, and Councilmember Toye for replying to my email that I sent on Friday in reference to my new friend Linda. And I appreciate the efforts put through. She had a surprise visit today from workers she wasn't expecting at 8 o'clock in the morning, and I guess she was kind of upset because she didn't know. But anyway, they did come back, and they put a sink in, so we're making progress. But one other thing that I'd kind of like to touch base on is that it's so important for the people that manage our senior programs that they need to kind of take a little step back and take a little more care when senior citizens have a problem or concern. It's very important. They get upset real easy. And I think it's very important that, you know, maybe some lessons, some sort of training for individuals that are working with these folks one-on-one would be very helpful. There is one of her friends who reached out to me this morning, who is having an issue, and I won't talk about it here tonight, but anyway, maybe we can, I'll send another email and ask maybe if you can address that too. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Denise Micah, Livonia. This past week, the campaign finance reports came out before the primary election for the Livonia Municipal Facilities Proposal. I just wanted to give a shout-out to all the people who supported the no side with their votes, hard work, money, and time. We appreciated your involvement and advice, friendships. Here is how loudly the citizens of Livonia voted and spoke. The Livonia vote no side spent .285 cents per vote versus the $11.51 cents per vote spent by the yes Livonia side. You heard that right, just a little bit more than a quarter. So Livonia, remember all those fancy mailings you receive, advertisements on Facebook, invites to spend on meet the candidates, all cost lots of money. Not all candidates for elected offices have the war chest that some candidates have. Not every candidate can raise funds as others, but are busy working the issues of Livonia and listening to the citizens. Not every candidate is willing to put themselves up for rent as easily as others to fund a campaign for more money than is earned in a year. So don't be fooled when you decide who you're voting for in November. Pick the candidate who shares your values, make an effort to meet you and listen to you. Don't choose a candidate with the fancy mailings, advertising, literature, and handouts, as those cost a lot of money. Money that could be better used for other things in our city. That is why we are supporting the four remaining candidates who bravely stood against the millage and gained the trust of the people to ask the questions. Some people believe that the elections this year shouldn't be focused on one issue, the millage. It turns out that the millage brought to light what was going on in Livonia. The status quo that existed is what got us in the mismanagement of city buildings, public safety, and services. The millage motivated more citizen involvement, striking to seek what the citizens have not received in many years, the transparency and fiscal responsibility that we should have in our elected officials who work for us, the people. Vote for the people who are different and not afraid to stand up. Vote for Steve King, Patrick Brockway, Eileen McDonald, and James Hooper. We need change and fiscal responsibility for Livonia's future. And we've only just begun. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up. If I may, guys, I understand and I appreciate it, I just want to address it now. You know, I've treated everybody with respect, I think most of us have. And obviously, we can, there's ordinances, I know that the First Amendment rights, I get that. I don't think we've, I've stopped anybody from free speech, but we do have to conduct a meeting. I'll be honest with you. So I'm asking a favor to say, hey, let's have decorum here, let's do things. If there is time to do things, I never shut things down. I hardly, I beg people not to gavel. I'm just looking to prepare a meeting and run it through. So I appreciate all the rights that are there with the Constitution, and I respect it a thousand times, but respect goes both ways, and I think I've given everybody respect. If I haven't, then please take it offline and let me know what I can do better. But just to do it for the sake of something, that's fine, but just know, it shouldn't be for games. I'm just going to say that, that's just my opinion. There's no games, you could say that, that's my opinion. But I've treated everybody with respect, and I hope it can go both ways, that's all I ask. With that, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
I won't take that long. Laura Janica, Amonger Street. Just, I've asked this question before, and I'm just going to ask it again. What's going on with the ADA bathrooms at the library? We're, I haven't heard any changes coming down the pipe, no new buildings coming that I'm aware of. We still don't have a bathroom, and we don't have accessibility here. We need some accommodations for all these meetings that are being held at the library and here. People have the right to come, this is what people want, is to have transparency and have a right to be heard. So, if you can let me know, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Steve King. First of all, I want to thank all the folks that came out to the Final Music From the Heart concert. It was last Thursday behind City Hall. And it happened to be my birthday as well, and friends of mine handed out almost 200 pieces of cake. So I thought that was a real nice thing for them to do. I wasn't on the schedule, yet we probably brought 10 times as many people to that show as any other show this summer, so I'm publicly thanking the citizens out there that supported me. Now my spiel, I'm speaking to you as a citizen, nothing more. I'm not an engineer, or at this time, a contractor, not a city official. I'm simply someone who cares about this community and about what Rotary Park should mean to Livonia. Rotary Park ought to be a place of pride, a place where families gather, where children play, where neighbors come together. Instead, it has become a story of neglect and poor leadership. Over a year ago, a storm badly damaged the park. Pavilion 1's roof was torn apart. Pavilion 2 also suffered. The insurance company offered to repair Pavilion 1, that should have been the end of the story, a straightforward fix. But apparently, someone else decided otherwise. Someone declared the pavilion unsafe, and I have heard three different names, and I won't share them with you publicly. Though they are not structural engineers and never brought one in to verify the claim that the pavilion was unsafe, it was torn down. For nine long months, the city fought the insurance company and lost. And now, instead of a repaired pavilion, Livonia taxpayers are left with a large bill for replacement. That was time and now money wasted that could have gone to real improvements across their parks. I want to be clear. It is not my job as a citizen to go out and find replacement bathrooms like I did when I looked at the Urban Blue model and shared that information. It is not my job to chase bids for timber-framed pavilions, which I did. Those are the responsibilities of a paid city employee, yet I have taken those steps because others have not. And that is what troubles me most. Rotary Park and parks across Livonia belong to all of us. They are not personal projects for misjudgments and delays. They are community treasures, they should be maintained with care, with professionalism, and with respect for the people who pay for them. When will people be held accountable? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, I'm a resident of the great state of Michigan. Just recently, this evening, I got my shirt, Steve King for council. Prior to receiving this, I made my own, okay? I'm a product of the Livonia Public School system, and I did the best I could, okay? I will say this, though, that it was mentioned earlier about the library, I'll give you a little bit of an update on the library. Recently, they got the elevator working. And, it was maybe three days ago, something like that. And the gentleman was there repairing that Otis elevator. And he had a box that, oh, I don't know, maybe, maybe 9 by 12, something like that. And that contained a circuit board. That's what was wrong. But when something goes bad on a circuit board, it usually burns right where the problem is, whether it's a resistor, a capacitor, or whatever. If you can take a soldering iron, you can take that off, order that same little thing for probably five bucks or less online, soldering iron and some solder, and solder it in yourself. I don't know what we paid for that, but once again, it does work, okay? Which is nice. As far as free speech, last September, I got a letter from the Law Department, just exactly what she can say under free speech. Because for years prior, any criticism... what she can say under free speech, and because for years prior, any criticism was shouted down, and that's exactly the way it was. And that really upset me, because all of you took an oath to honor the Constitution when you go into service, same thing. When you go in to be a police officer, same thing, okay, public servant. So anyway, at the end of the day, free speech, you can say anything here except the fact that you might want to harm somebody or whatever. I can swear here, I can do, I can say anything here. I can use bad language. It doesn't make any difference, okay? It's free speech is what it is. And, so let's, you know. One other thing as far as free speech, sign-in sheets, you don't have to sign in. It might be nice to let people know how many are there. The people that attend meetings upstairs, okay, and they count how many, we had 16 people here or whatever, you don't have to sign a damn thing. You don't have to sign anything, okay? Somebody wants to count how many people were at a committee meeting of the whole or some other meeting upstairs on the second floor, you can just count, count the heads in the room. You don't have to have a sign-in sheet. Sign-in sheet is not required for free speech either. And, oh, I guess that's my cue.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
You bet.
Any other audience communication? Seeing none, I want to jump to council announcements. Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. First off, I'll start off with saying, go Lions, even though we took a tough loss.
Bad day.
And Councilwoman Laura Toye, it was a bad day to watch Wolverines lose.
Go Green.
But for my state fans, they were pretty happy, so I'm hoping that that will change.
Finally.
Yeah, they finally win once or twice, every once in a while, right, Councilwoman Toye?
Yes.
But I wanted to address, all of a sudden, there's a bunch of free speech experts and constitutional experts, and I am not neither, but I will say, when the council president has to have basic rules and decorums, I've been on this council for nearly six years, I've attended hundreds of meetings across Metro Detroit, and the city of Livonia gives the most leeway of any councils that I've ever been to. It is normal, again, I'm not a constitutional attorney, but it is normal to have basic rules and regulations inside of an auditorium full of people. I'm not going to get into every single rule, because again, I don't know how all those things work, but if you go to the legislature, as former Councilwoman Toye knows, you can't just go in there and yell and shout and clap and do whatever you want, you can't do that here. There are rules. If you walk into and interview at your employer and start yelling and shouting and chanting and clapping, you're going to be asked to not do that there either. This is a professional workplace, we're trying to get work done, some of the people that come here have really great things to say, and we try to listen to them. When we ask you to sign in, it's not because anyone's keeping track of you, but if I go there, was that one person that said something, and we ask our council manager to look that up, she can go back and reference that person, maybe they left an address, maybe we can get city services to those people. When we ask you for your name and address, it's not a requirement, again, we're just trying to identify residents that may or may not have concerns, so that we can maybe get in touch with them somehow. So this whole conspiracy about we're trying to stop public speech and whatnot, that's just an exaggeration from people with alternative motives, we're just here doing our job. And if you come up here yelling and clapping and swearing at the auditorium, you're not going to be taken seriously, because we're being distracted from just having adult conversations with people. And I've sat on this council for six years, and it's gotten worse this year all of a sudden, and I just can't understand why. Why we cannot just have normal conversations, I may agree with you, may disagree with you, but there are people here that maybe want to speak, they're nervous, they've never spoke before people before, and the council has basic rules, so we don't intimidate people. So they feel comfortable coming up to a microphone and speaking for the first time in front of the public. So these are just basic rules, we are no different than any other city, and with that being said, Mr. Fisher, our city attorney, if you could maybe send council a memo of some sort or some sort of public comment on those basic procedures, and I would note that if we were violating anyone's rights, our city attorney would stop us in the moment and say, hey, you're getting too close there. So I don't believe we're doing anything wrong, I believe we're just trying to conduct official business in an adult manner, whether we agree or disagree. I don't understand this obsession with having to clap after every single time someone speaks, which just loses track of what we're trying to accomplish here, you know, just input, back-and-forth residents, and I just feel like all of a sudden this year, there's some political alternative motive with certain people, and it just, it's, we're not here to attack people, we're here to attack ideas, and I just wish we could have a normal meeting without some political candidates and their shots that they take sometimes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have some good community news to share, but I am going to just piggyback a little bit on Mr. Donovan's statement. I am not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV, Mr. Carter's here, though, if I get this wrong, but the Constitution does protect free speech, but it does have limitations on certain categories. And to the resident that was just speaking, one of those is obscenities and fraud, obviously child pornography, anything integral to like illegal conduct, speech that would incite lawless action, speech that violates intellectual property law, true threats, false statements of fact, and commercial speech such as advertising. Frankly, when I was a candidate for council two years ago and a member of the ZBA, I had to come before council a few times. Not once did I mention that I was a council candidate, not once did I campaign when I came before council, and I can speak, Mrs. Bezinski was running at the same time, and neither did she. So, you know, and that's fine, that's your right to do that, but we're not trying to squash anyone here, we're just asking for some decorum. And so, just, you know, know that that's what's going on. That wasn't my intention to speak on tonight, but I just, you know, had to piggyback. What I did want to talk about, though, is I did want to give a shout-out to Veronica Cruz and the Breaking Barriers for Kids, and yesterday had their great Tour de Livonia event. I did ride in the bike race, 18 miles, so if you see me, you know, I'm really thankful that my chair is cushioned today. But it was a great event, we had a lot of good times, talked to a lot of residents while we were pedaling. Thank you to Alpha USA as well, we were able to stop there, it was kind of our rest point through it. We started and stopped at Bicentennial Park. Police officers and the reserve officers were out there blocking off the roads. Thrilled how smooth Farmington Road was to ride on yesterday, that was really nice. Seven Mile, not so much, but it was a really great event. It's one of my favorite events of the year, and I really, really had a great time. Afterward, there was the corn roast, I had to get to a family event, but I was able to just spend a few minutes there, go to all the volunteers, really great to see all the different organizations that our city has. Truly is the spirit of Livonia when you see all those different groups. So just wanted to give that a shout-out. If you haven't done the Tour de Livonia, first weekend of September every year, just, you know, sign up, they have different lengths, you don't have to do the 18 miles, you can do, I think it's a seven-mile one, so, but anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Some, I know there could be some confusion when we take and ask for your name and address, but quite frankly, everything we do up here, believe it or not, is legal or not legal, and this guy over here in his department, Mr. Carter, has got to defend the city if it becomes a lawsuit. So there are purposes for different things that we do now and over the years that we've done them. We can always improve, everybody's got their own opinions, and you have a right to speak on your opinions, but if this council determines they're, that it's inappropriate, then four to five votes overrule, you know, because that is the will of the council. So just, you know, there's limitations on a few of these things. I also wanted to look at something the resident had come up, Eileen, I believe it was, on the Silver Village issue. It was an issue that involved an ADA unit, that we were able, as she said, Martha, and, was it Brandon, honed in on as well, appreciate their input as well. I saw it before I went to the spree dinner, and we got a lot taken care of, I think, in a short amount of time, which was important to do. But when I got to the spree dinner, it was a whole nother story. I sat with a bunch of people that I didn't know, which was great, except that they had an earful for me about Newburg Village, and that was the new, if we could report this to somebody, the courier systems that they put in there evidently are very loud, and they have to use a remote control, I don't know, I'm a senior myself, sometimes you do get a little hearing impaired, but for the most part, they have to turn up the remote controls to hear with air conditioning units on, which was very troubling to them, whether it's a fan issue or whatever, but it's not only from one of them, it's from several, several of them over there. So if we could just direct that to the proper, I guess it's Madison or one of those people in that department, that would be most helpful for them to be aware of that situation. So I just wanted to share that.
Yep, and I know we have representatives from the mayor's office here that's taking notes.
Perfect, yep, and I didn't get time to call them, or I would have, but, yeah, cool. Yep. And then, no, just lastly, do you want me to wait for my referrals?
No, go for it now.
Should I do it now? Okay. I'd like to refer to resolutions, or maybe we can combine it, just because we've heard a lot from the community about limiting the number of gas stations and car washes in our city, if that's possible, or whatever. Other cities have done it, I'm not saying I'm supporting it or not supporting it, I just think it behooves us to look into it, that's all.
What committee are you thinking?
Well, I was hoping to get the opinion of law, to make sure it's legal.
There you go.
Yeah.
Report and recommendation.
Report and recommendation, correct.
Do we have support?
Yeah, I'll support that for sake of discussion.
Thank you. Do you want to expand, or are you?
Well, no, it's just, I think, you know, every time you turn around, people are saying, and I guess the big rumor out there is, and maybe it's not a rumor, Mark would know better than I would, planning is looking at a site, which they have a right to because of zoning with commercial, but Dubuca, De Beppo, the former Italian restaurant there on Seven Mile, is rumored to have a proposal on a gas station, and of course, we all get made fun of on the gas stations and the chicken places. I don't know if any of you have heard it, but I certainly have heard it. So I'm just bringing it forward to save us a lot of aggravation in time, to see if people would, you know, look at the number of gas stations, we're just putting in, what is it, 20 to 30 more pumps at Costco, at Eight Mile, and Hagerty, so things are changing, and times are changing, and those of you that are going to be here, going to, three of you out of the seven of us, will have to kind of take a look at those things. I was just trying to move ahead, not saying this is the way it should be or not be, it's just to look at it.
Sounds good. We have a, we do have a motion, council, do you have any input before? Oh, yes.
Yeah, Mr. President, you know, on face value, I will support this report and recommendation from the Law Department, because I think it'll be interesting to read into the public record that I think land use matters are very specific, and as we've seen as a city, we've been, we face lawsuits for certain unconstitutional matters when it relates to land use and other things like that. So I'm assuming that the council doesn't necessarily have a right to just blatantly limit a legal type of business or industry within the city of Livonia, for example, adult entertainment, or we can't just limit that, I don't want that in our city, but I do not believe the city council has the authority to just say, we don't like something, so they can't come here, so long as it meets a specific zoning criteria and all those things that the Constitution would allow those protections to land, to someone that owns property. But I think it'll be interesting to hear from our attorney and what their legal explanation is, and I think it'll be a good homework assignment for the council to get, to brush up on and review, so that we can limit the potential for future litigation when it revolves land use matters, so I'll be okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was just supporting that as a matter of conversation and see what the Law Department comes up with, but I do believe you're correct as far as what, our hands would be tied mostly when it comes to land use. So, all right, thank you.
Any other council comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bezinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the item passes seven to zero. Councilwoman Toye, did you have another, or?
No, no, thank you very much, council. I think it'll clear the air on some of this to see the land use.
Sounds good, no.
Councilman Donovan, you can sit.
There you go. Councilwoman Bezinski.
Yes. So I wanted to say a couple of things, address a couple of audience comments. I'll start with the campaign finance remarks, just because campaign finance can be really complicated to understand, and for the Say Yes campaign particularly, that was a campaign group that was independently organized, separate from the city and separate from candidates themselves. The mailers that you received for Say Yes were related to the bond only, no candidates were involved in that entity, organization, they didn't profit from that going out. So I just wanted to be clear that, you know, that bond issue, which is over, there is no, you know, the bond vote was overwhelmingly a denial, as we all know, there is, you know, we will be looking for other alternatives moving forward outside of that. So I just wanted to clarify that statement. Regarding the bathrooms at the library, that was part of my budget request. When we had our budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, I asked the administration to move forward with the budgeted for projects at the library that had been delayed, as we had the bond proposal moving forward and didn't know what direction we were going there. So, you know, we'll likely find out when the budget is presented to us next week, I think it's next week, you know, exactly where we stand on that particular issue. Wanted to share some events that are coming up. I do have my coffee hour at the library on September 20th, it is a Saturday at 11 o'clock. I do a council update about things that have happened in the months between my coffee hours, I take questions, we chat, whatever, you know, you want to talk about, it's usually a good time. I bring Looney Donuts and some drinks. On September 25th, at 6 o'clock, at Garfield Skill Center Community School, there is a greenhouse there, and Livonia Public School is going to co-host Livonia Women's Connection that I do with Councilwoman Toye and our colleagues. Martha and Linda are always, always join in on the fun, it is a free networking event designed with women in mind, but open to anyone if you want to come and join. It's from 6 to 8, it's free, it's just a casual chat, bring old friends, meet new friends, also a good time. And then finally, on October 5th, which is a Sunday, from 2 to 4, you can come out to Meas Park, and I host a trick-or-treat event, treat and meet the candidates for local office. So I host this every other year for our local election, since it's a local community election, I want to bring the community together in a family-friendly environment, and so the candidates will host treat stations, all eight candidates are going to be there, you just bring your families, you don't need kids, if you don't have kids, don't feel like you can't come. Come get candy, come get lit from the candidates, it's a chance to talk with them one-on-one, meet them, ask them questions. Hopefully the weather's good, keep your fingers crossed there, and again, it should be a good time and totally free and open to all, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually forgot a couple of things. I know there's been a lot of conversation about Rotary. We actually have a Capitol Outlay Meeting next Monday to discuss Rotary, Monday, the 15th, at 7:00 PM on the second floor, so I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. We'll be, I actually was the one that sent it to committee, because I, when it came in at that $850,000 price tag, I was a little verklempt, I guess, so we sent it there, and we'll be talking about that next week and how we're going to move forward. Also, as far as the budget, that's come up a lot as well. On September 29th, we do have our public hearing for finance and budget, that'll be held here in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. I know Mrs. Bezinski just addressed the ADA bathrooms as one of the requests that we had on there, so that I'm sure will be discussed among a litany of other items that council brought to the Finance and Budget Committee Meeting. If you're interested in that, I did do a readout at the last council meeting, so it will be in the minutes from the last meeting, so you can see that, and the minutes from the actual Finance and Budget Committee Meeting are also posted on our site. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Just one last thing, on that ADA stuff, as it relates to the bathroom and the funding, there was a little confusion. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues, Rashida Tlaib, our Congresswoman, was supposedly had the federal funds. I heard, obviously, that wasn't true, it's Mary Kavanaugh, our state senator, at least in some of our area. There is sometimes a time limit on those funds, but never to worry, because the state legislature has not approved their own budget quite yet, and they're kind of arguing, so we might, we have some breathing room, as you all probably know that, I just wanted to voice that for, again, residents that are having some confusion over those dollars, and, and again, Carrie wants to comment, I think, thank you, I'm done.
I could be mistaken, but I believe they were CDBG funds. So they were not from any specific representative, they are federal funds that we get annually through the CDBG program, that the city then has certain categories that we can use the funds for, which is why the funds are able to be held, and we're going to be redirected to a different ADA project, but they weren't. And were going to be redirected to a different ADA project, but they weren't, so.
Sure. Well, Mary got some money somewhere, didn't she?
Well, and you know what, right now, guys, I know, right now, that, if I may, no, the, and I know it's in committee right now, and I talked to Councilman Donavich before the meeting, and it's one of the things that, in the next upcoming meeting, he was planning on adding, with the time issues on it, because it would probably be in this fiscal year. So we're hoping that that comes up, and we'll get it on the books. We'll let everybody know. Any other comments from council? All right, so I have a, I want to touch base. I know most of, a lot of people in here were at the Cornrows yesterday. Was it yesterday, right? What a time, honestly. The weather was good. It was wild to see everybody kind of, it's a very small spot. It is, and there's a lot of bees going around. There's a Kona truck sponsored by a really cool dude. You're welcome. But no, it was a good time to kind of see what's out there with the community and all the different groups. And everybody, for the most part, I don't, I didn't notice any fights or anything crazy like that. It seemed to be, for the most part, a really good time in learning about different things. I mean, honestly, if you haven't been to one of those events, you can learn, I mean, we have a, we have a sandbox where the treasure, Michigan treasure hunters are letting kids find coins and everything, you know? We've got, anything you can think of, it's there, and you'll learn something new. So if you haven't done it, feel free next year. I think we're going to be going on the 9th. It's just a good time to meet people and take a look at different opportunities out there. And speaking of that, another tradition. Right now, we're targeting February 1st. You're hearing it first. The Livonia All-Stars are going to go for five straight losses against the Red Wings alumni at the Edgar Ice Arena. This time, we're trying to stay away from any of the NFL playoff games, but with the way the Lions are going, I mean, who knows at this point? But again, more information's coming. Again, that is an event that you could see both Councilman Donavich, and he will be there. He's a main event. He sells a lot of tickets, because everybody wants to see him out there, so.
I think everybody wants to see me get hit.
But it's always a good time, honestly. I call it the, it's the Hallmark Hockey thing. And, you know, Darren McCarty fought one of our guys the last time. They signed waivers, nobody was hurt, and they hugged after, but it's an awesome time. So you'll see more information on that. And we sell out quick, so get your tickets. With that, we're going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. I know we have the chief of staff, and before I hand it over to him, let me just do the one thing. We do have communication from the Department of Finance dated August 20th, 2025, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending June and July 2025. That's a receive and file. And without further ado, it's good to see you, Mr. Varga.
Thank you, President. Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Brosnan to highlight, we've already talked a lot about ADA, to highlight some of the important upgrades being completed at Silver Village to make the bathrooms ADA accessible, knowing how important it is to serve our older residents who have physical limitations. The Housing Commission is currently installing walk-in showers in place of bathtubs and making other modifications in Building 10, which is designed to be accessible, completely accessible. The investment for improving these apartments is $82,000, funded by the Silver Village Operating Fund. Of the six two-bedroom units in that building, two were improved last year while they were vacant. Another is currently in progress, and some of you have heard about the concern involving work in that apartment and the difficulties of the resident living there during the process. There was a problem mainly due to delays by contractors, and the housing staff has been working closely with the resident, as you've seen in some of the communications back to the council, to ensure that there are options for using a bathroom in a vacant unit. When that was inconvenient, the resident was offered the opportunity to move into another vacant unit or to potentially be moved elsewhere. Housing staff remains in daily contact with the resident to try to make her more comfortable, including today, when the contractor did surprise her with a very early morning visit. Another unit will be brought up to ADA accessible standard later this year, and two more units next year. In future years, Housing Commission plans to upgrade all 108 apartments in Silver Village. We know that the council works to be champions of ADA accessibility, and this project is a really good example of that. And thank you for your time and letting me share this.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Dave, anything from council that would like to ask questions? But I appreciate the update. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items one through five on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on August 25th and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Good there. All right, council, any comments? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Consent agenda carries seven to zero. We are now moving on to unfinished business, starting with item number six. Is request to extend waiver use approval to the new owner at Elite Foot and Body Spa. This is in reference to petition 2019-04-02-07, submitted by Ms. Pi, to operate a massage establishment located on the west side of Middlebelt Road between Pierton Avenue and Six Mile Road. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving, and I normally don't, but I remember this coming before us initially. And I think that we're on safe ground.
Okay.
I support.
You support. Any comments from council?
Can I address, Mr. President?
Yes. Is the petitioner, the petitioners here? If you'd like to make your way up, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, and then I'm going to open it up to council if they've got questions.
Yes, my name is Sherry Liu. I'm representing Xiaoping Sun, the new owner, the future owner for the Ocean Wellness. And Xiaoping, and the husband is out of town because the mother is very sick. So I've been talking to Sarah and to let her know that, what's going on. So, but they'll be coming back October the 4th. And, yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know, if we were to go ahead with the transfer, are all the massage therapists going to be licensed therapists?
Correct, yes. Actually, Xiaoping, for the 2024, she became owner of the massage place, and she, we have been submitted all the documentation, including the business license, including her massage license from Michigan State. And all of the document, City of Livonia has it on file.
Okay, thank you. You know, it always brings a little concern sometimes when massage parlors come into town. And, you know, unfortunately, there are some illicit businesses, and then there's very reputable businesses, and we have to be, make sure.
Yes.
One thing that was, kind of gave me a pause today, is that Elite Foot and Spa was listed on a website that had listed illicit massage parlors. Now, I don't know the credence behind that, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity to address this issue.
So Xiaoping was always been a manager since 2015. And it's been the, during the pandemic, was closed for like few months, but she was always been the manager, never been the owner, until 2024, that from Edmund Lang. And he stepped out because he no longer be able to manage her. So Xiaoping is become owner since 2024. So she actually been worked there since 2015 to now, 2025. So.
So some of these issues, perhaps?
It was from the previous, the owner, where it has nothing to do, I think the police, we, police report that from the city of Livonia was some kind of misunderstanding or something that from the previous employee, then that was before she became owner. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's why I just wanted to give you the chance to offer that.
Yes, Councilwoman Toy?
If I may, to the petitioner, her questions are good, and where I'm wondering is, what, what, if anything, are you going to keep an eye on over there?
I will definitely keep an eye on over there.
Okay, and what is, I guess, what would be your role in this? Will we see you again representing other massage places?
I, like I said, for, for the last, like, 2024, that I was here, and also representing Xiaoping as well, the whole process with the city of Livonia. And I've been pretty much helping to setting up the business for EIN number, which is, we already did it now. We're going to use O, and it's Ocean Wellness, too. It's O W, and already registered in Michigan State website. And we have that EIN number. So the last time that once Xiaoping became owner, I also involved with the city inspection, and also the fire department, the police, everything. So this, yeah, so.
I'm trying to remember which one you're referring to. What, what location was that again?
Uh, that, the one that is in Plymouth Row, so, which is the 34389 Plymouth Row, yes.
All righty. Okay, so you're going to keep an eye on things?
Yes.
You do have other people that are going to come forward for massage establishments within our city, right?
Yes, we do, because it's actually only five miles away from each other. So our Plymouth Row massage is actually, the space is limited. So we always have people come in, and we have to turn people away. Now we have the second business, which is in Middlebelt. So since it's only 11 minutes away, and we can keep those employee who, like, I think there's like three people right there, or two or three people there, so they're not going to lose their job. We will hire them. And meanwhile, actually, Haiyan, which is the Ocean Wellness owner, she, as we mentioned last time, and her husband as well, and they are scheduled for the treatment, because she have cancer. So hopefully, she will be have a very fast, speedy recovery. Then when she's well, that we will hire her back.
Okay, and I think you realize some of the concerns that municipalities and others have when it comes to these various locations, even the ones in the malls. And, you know, I can't begin to tell you my experiences within the venue of human trafficking.
Understand.
When you have 400,000 children missing in this country,
Yes.
it's a little troubling when we start getting into some of this stuff. And we want to make sure you're on even ground, and that's why I said in my opening comment that I don't usually support this. But I, I remember your wife from when she came in and served, the one that standing behind you. I'm sorry, I forget your name. I'm old. So we, you know, I think, I think it's very legitimate what you're doing. I just want to keep that legitimacy within our community, because you're going to set the tone for others, okay?
Yes.
And I don't mean to sound like I'm lecturing, but I am, because it can be a very dangerous situation for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazinski?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify why I'm supporting this, and maybe remind residents that this isn't about bringing a new business into the city. It is about Elite Foot Spa, which is at Plymouth Road and Stark Road. And as noted in 2024, this council had approved the shift in ownership to the current owner of that location, who's looking to buy Ocean Wellness on Middlebelt. At the time, we were very critical, you know, we gave it a really good look. If I'm not mistaken, the building owner had even come and spoken support of the current owner of this business, saying that she was a good tenant, and he supported that. As noted, the current owners of Ocean Wellness Spa is dealing with a medical issue. And so they're looking to just take over that current location that's been there for over five years, so that that business doesn't have to close. And, you know, we don't have an added vacancy in Livonia. And so, you know, this isn't about bringing a new business, or even new business owners into our city. It is about maintaining businesses that currently exist with business ownership that we have already evaluated as a council, and that we've been told, and have no evidence to the contrary, that the Livonia Police Department has had any calls or been involved in any concerns at either location. So that is why I feel confident in supporting this motion. And again, just wanted to provide that as a clarifying statement, if it helps.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote? Oh, oh, sorry. Would you like, oh, you'd like to speak? I'm sorry. Name and, if, name and address, if you could just let us know who you are.
My name's Doug, my name's Doug Rans. I live in Wald Lake now. My wife, Haiyan, is the, the owner of the business. Yes, she has some medical issues. They're going to require long-term care. We've had three offers for the business. We turned two of them down. One was for stupid money. Owner in New York, absentee owner. Were not interested. The other owner is from Novi, no industry experience whatsoever, absentee owner. Again, a lot more money, but we, we feel pretty strong about our repeat customers, and more than three-quarters of our business is repeats. So we're bringing fire and police in from Franklin, Detroit, Farmington, Farmington Hills, Livonia, Plymouth, Redford, fire, police, EMTs. And with that kind of repeat business, we feel a little responsibility that they're going to be in the right place. Also, Ms. Shen and my wife happen to be from the same hometown. We discovered that two weeks ago, but there's a little bit of, of interest, collegial interest. So in Michigan, we do this. They were doing the same thing, but talking about their hometown and the whole Lafayette versus American Coney Island style arguments. So we're confident that Ms. Shen runs a legitimate operation based on our, our work, and we've turned down considerably more money from people that we just don't trust. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right, already went to the audience. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item six carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to new business.
So much, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night. We're going to move on to new business. Item seven is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Livonia. This comes to us from the Engineering Division in reference to traffic signal modernization along Five Mile Road at Levan and Newburgh Road at Linden.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Mr. President, this is standard. We're updating the traffic signals that we operate with some partnership with some other governmental entities at Five Mile, Levan, and also Newburgh and Linden, so this will be a nice improvement. People that don't know, traffic signals, they can communicate with one another, the newer traffic signals. So hats off to the Engineering Department and DPW and all that helped get this done.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Moving on to item eight is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to amend sections 75, 80, and 115 of Title II, which is Administration, Chapter IV. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving for this. This is going to, oh, first read, sorry, yes. I'll offer a first read for this. I knew that.
I do, I do it all the time.
Back to me.
Yeah.
This will streamline the business of getting council agendas done, getting our packets published, et cetera. Just kind of some housekeeping that needed to happen, and it'll make everything just a little bit smoother for all.
We got a first read. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? We are actually at the end, so I'm going to go back to the audience. If you haven't spoke, and you would like to spike on something that was not on the agenda, make your way up. Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
No, you know what? I do have to say this. I'm not trying to belabor this, but we're going back to council. And since I got the chief up there, he reminded me of about something that is awesome that's coming up on September, Saturday, September 27th, 10 to 2:00 p.m., Fire Station 3, which is at Seven and Wayne, at right, at the bicentennial entrance. It's the open house. You got, I mean, adults can go too, you know? It's, it's friends for all, but it's a great time to, to meet some of the firefighters, see what they do, and meet some of the neighbors. So with that, I'm going to go back to it and go for it.
Mr. President, motion to adjourn.
Support.
I think we could safely show everybody here. See you in 10 minutes for the study.